One, two. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to Tapping with Tristan. We have another long live Amityville edition. And this is a privilege to be sitting with this gentleman. Dr. Terry Fulton. Talk to you about the.
Tristan, it's an honor, it's truly it's an honor and pleasure to be on your podcast here. You know, I'm truly excited for what you're doing, the things to come here. So, so I just want to be part of it, you know, so I'm truly blessed and excited about it.
Likewise, the feeling is mutual. So I, I thank you for taking time out of your schedule. You have a lot of things going on. For those who do not know, can you please let them know what your position is currently in the community?
Right, currently, right now, I service the president of Amityville School District. This is my third term as president. And I also serve as vice president for NAACP for the Central Long Island Chapter. I also serve as vice president for the Caucus for Black School Board Members in New York State.
So, so, so check, check, check. So we're impacting a lot of lives here. So want to celebrate you, want to learn more about you. And then we want to build to see how we can help some of this youth beyond this. So once again, thank you so much. Um, you are Amityville guy.
Yeah.
You are Amityville guy. So, so tell us a little bit about that growing up and then we'll kind of tie into some of the things currently. What did that look like growing up? What class were you? And let's, let's start there.
Okay, I'm class of eighty-one. You know, I came through with the Claude Byer, you know, and Fred Williams.
Yes.
You know, growing up in Amityville, a little bit tough. I mean, I, I grew up in East Massapequa, from East Massapequa.
Right.
My parents came, moved from New Orleans.
Okay.
And seventy-two, purchased a house in East Massapequa in seventy-two. And, you know, it was, I came up in an era when, you know, things were a little rough over there in Amityville here. We still had Browns, we had the block there. And my father was, you know, he worked for the school at that time. He was a painter. So he got around. So I had to be very cautious of what area, territory I rolled in here. But you know, you know, I really was able to embrace and, and, and meet some genuine individuals, some, you know, some classmates here that even today that we stay in contact with each other. You know, it, it, it just, to me, it was just, it's a pleasure. It just, it's been a pleasure, you know, this whole process, you know, from being a student in Amityville, coming through the ranks, you know, to adulthood, you know, and to the professional world, you know, it's just been an honor, man. It's been a pleasure, been ups and downs, but, but it's truly has been more ups than downs.
That's beautiful. And, and for you to be an Amityville warrior and to have such great positions, we celebrate you. We're very proud and proud to say that you are an alum. So thank you so much.
I, I appreciate that. And, and, and Tristan, I, I, you know, celebrate you also on the podcast that you're doing. Because, you know, I always said, you know, we have to, each generation has to embrace each other. You know, it's one thing for you to do, your generation to do something. It's another thing for my generation to do something. But when we can collaborate with each other and come together and great minds come to the table and, and great ideas come, that's how we benefit. That's how we move forward, you know, and this journey that we on.
One thousand percent. So again, we're, we're, we're like-minded in that, where we're trying to unify many different people, many different experiences. You know what I mean? To kind of share what we need to do in order to just improve, not just our community, but, but beyond that. So for those who don't know, I, I, myself included, what is, what is the role of the Board of Education? I don't think a lot of people recognize what the role of the Board of Education is. If you can give that to us in a nutshell, great.
Sure. So the Board of Education, far as Amityville is concerned, it's a seven-person member board. Okay, some districts here may have five, some may have nine, some may have eleven, but, but Amityville itself has seven. And the role in a nutshell of the Board of Education is to govern, the governed body of the district. So they, so you have the superintendent. In general, everybody reports to the Board of Education. But if you want to break it down, and the simplistic is, is the superintendent, the district clerk will report directly to the Board of Education. And then the superintendent would be the CEO and the Board of Education would be the owners. Okay, so I, I'm trying to break it down as easy.
In business terms, so that way people can kind of get a snapshot of what was really going on.
Correct, correct.
So, so, so it's, again, it's very, it's, it's, it's an important piece to the, to the school district. Now, coming through the ranks, right? You've seen a side of it as a, as, you know what I mean, growing up as a, a student? And moving forward into adulthood, what made you want to go into some of these type of positions? Did it kind of find you or did you find it?
Well, you know, it really kind of found me. After I graduated from Cheney University, I went into corporate America.
Okay.
And, you know, it just so happens, and I have three sons, you know, two of them went to Amityville.
Okay.
One's graduated and the other one is in eleventh grade now.
Okay.
And I just started attending board meetings. And I have some associates and, and colleagues that, you know, would go to the meeting or were on the board at one particular time. And they said, you know, Terry, why don't you start attending meetings? I, I think you could be an asset to the board here. So I was like, okay, let me see, you know, what it's inquiring, what, what, what the role of it is here. And so the more and more I started to attend meetings here, I saw a need for change. You know, and, and not only a need for change, but a need, you know, Amityville, that those that don't know, Amityville District is comprised of South Amityville, North Amityville, and East Massapequa.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's an equality for all areas, even though it's just Amityville District here, you know, but it serves three different areas here. And, and, and my goal, you know, as president of the Board of Education, is to ensure that we are serving all parties, all kids. We have a responsibility to every child that comes through the district here, to make sure we give them the best opportunity to succeed, the best resources. So when they step out here and graduate, because that's the, that's the prize there, be able to graduate and go and be successful in society. You know, that's when I smile, that's when I can look and say, you know, well done, we've done a good job.
We've done a good job. So that's beautiful, that's beautiful. And, and I can tell the passion that you have for, for all the individuals. So that makes me excited. What does the, what does the community have to do in order to help do this? Do you feel like we're doing a good job as a whole, starting with Amityville? And, and if, if so, what are the things that we're doing well? And if not, what are some of the areas of opportunity that we can probably grab hold of?
Well, I, I think we, there's always room for improvement.
Right.
You know, participation for, from the parents, from the guardian, coming out to board meetings. You know, the Board of Education meets standardly the first Wednesday and second Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
We have our meetings. So if we had more participation in the parents and guardians coming out, understanding the role of what the Board of Education does, understanding that you can bring ideas to the table here. I mean, there's no guarantee that everything that you say, the board is going to grasp and, and, and embrace or a standpoint adopting. But, you know, being able to hear, and once again, without being redundant, having more ideas at the table, being able to collaborate with one another. You sharing something, I'm sharing something here, and we coming up with a common goal, that, that, that's what it's all about. So I would say more collaboration from the community, understanding that we always are not going to agree.
Right.
But we can agree to disagree.
Right.
On this particular issue, and then maybe on another issue here, we agree upon here. But it's, 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 it's just like a business here. You know, you're not, everybody's a family, everybody's not going to agree on everything here. But the goal is to meet, come in the middle, hit a common goal, you know, meet somewhere in the middle here where we, we all can say, okay, you know, we're moving forward here and we're, we're pleased on where we at. Not satisfied, but pleased, you know.
And, and continue to make progression. So what I'm hearing is participation. So hopefully, hopefully, just having this podcast ring out can bring forth a little bit more awareness on the sides of, you know what I mean, the parents.
Yes.
And, and the people that are guardians, to understand that they do have a role. They have a role and they have a voice. And if we can come out, if we can come out, then like you said, there's a collaboration.
Yes.
They're probably, they need to recognize that there is a collaboration more than they even know. So let's talk a little bit about some of the other roles that you, you mentioned, the NAACP and.
And NAACP, I'm honored to serve as, as first vice president for NWC Central Long Island Chapter. You know, once again, it, you know, opportunity to continue to push us, you know, as a community to, to be empowered, you know, to, to seek and, 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 and become better at something that we do. And, and also to advertise, you know, we have so many different talents in Amityville and East Massapequa and, and South Amityville here. And, you know, and it's, it's not, you know, just digressing a tad bit here, going back when you was asking me, how can we improve, you know, as far as board meeting is concerned? Yes, participation from the community also. But, but, you know, what I tried to explain that it's not us against you.
There you go.
It's not a fight here, you know, it's not our way all the time or your way. If you bring good ideas to the table, if you bring things that are tangible, that we actually can apply, you know, because the Board of Education is responsible having, putting policies and procedures together. So if you bring things that we actually can apply, then yes, it's a win-win situation for everybody. And that's the goal, is for it to be a win-win situation.
I, I, I think that's great that you're saying that because we're, we've almost been conditioned to the point where it's a us versus them.
Yes.
Authority figures. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Board or some type of governing body, it's really a us versus them type of a situation. So for you to even say that there's a voice, that makes it pretty more, that, that makes it more hopeful. You know what I mean? For anybody that is listening, now it's going to be on them to participate and, and share information so we can get more, more participants. So we can get some of these good ideas on the table and then have them be applied to be able to help the community out.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. That, that's great. I mean, well said, you know, and, and like I said, the more that we have participation, because I would say now we're, we're starting to have a good turnout on some of our meetings here. But my goal is not to have good turnouts only when there's something negative going on with the community.
Right.
And voice their frustration or anger, but also be able to attend meetings on a regular basis and voice your satisfaction and your approval of what you see, the things and changes that are going on in the district. I often say, you'll hear me say this all the time, I believe Amityville is like a diamond in the rough. We simply need leadership to guide us and lead us to the promised land. And, and then that's what I'm trying to do, be that small little part that leads here along with other individuals in the district that lead us.
I, I agree. And we, and we've been fortunate, I've been fortunate enough to build with you a little bit before this. And we've had some conversations and talking about that. So it's spot on. It's we, we've, we have a really strong, a, a strong network inside of Amityville from the people that have come through over the years.
Absolutely.
A lot of different, a lot of different career paths and everything like that. And one thing that did come up was youth programs.
Yes.
And it started naturally for me in the sports department, because, you know, that kind of was my calling card growing up. But it should be a part, but it shouldn't be the whole. But more often than not, when it comes to some of our programs, we're having to go to Copec or Massapequa and then merge together back at the middle school. And it's phenomenal that when the merge comes, there's still high level performance.
Yes.
So if there is a way to look at some type of youth program, I think the time is now. And this is something that we talked about.
I would, I would agree with you one hundred percent. And, and piggybacking on what you're saying with the youth program, when I got into sports here, because Amityville, you know, didn't have a program, you know, I went to Copec, you know, down in Tana Park. You know, so you either had to go to Copec or you went to Massapequa Park, all right? So that's where the youth programs were. So, and my thing is that if we can start something in Amityville, you know, that, that, that are just equal, equal, as equal as what they are putting out in, in Copec or Massapequa and Massapequa Park here. I, I think that's, that's a home run for us here. Because as you know, being, being a talented sportsman and student and, and sports young man that you are, I mean, you know, and you hit it dead on when you said it, it's, it's a miracle, I mean, it's, it's, it's a blessing that when we, we get to the middle school, that you still have so many talented individuals here that can come in and blossom and then move on to the next, you know, the next phase. But imagine if that was going on at a younger age, how much more you can, you can empower and you can let me really build into that individual, you know, girls and, and boys, you know, participating in sports.
Absolutely. And then from there, now from there, now we're looking at programs for all different types of career paths. Because like I said, just doing some of my historian, natural historian, we have a couple of things going on to celebrate people from Amityville and hopefully start branching out on the Facebook page and everything. It was blowing my mind that everybody, there's so many people throughout the years that have come from this small location.
Yes.
They're doing amazing things across this globe. And sports is one of them, you know, we have a flagship in basketball, we have talented football and wrestling and, and the youth programs are elsewhere. So is it possible for us to even get something like that? From your perspective as a board member and, you know, someone who's grown, grew up and that's helping now, is that even possible for us to get something like that? What would that take?
I mean, I, I think it's absolutely, it starts with a conversation. I think it starts with individuals coming to the table and willing to, you know, put their money where their mouth is here. If you're saying this is something that we want to do here, all right, let's put our brains together, let's format it here, let's set it up here and, and let's go into action, you know. I posted on Facebook and I'm not really a Facebook guy here, but every once in a while.
Every once in a while, you gotta go in there and mix it up a little bit.
You know, and my last post I had, I said, you know, basically, I'm paraphrasing, but, you know, stop, everybody's talking about change. Everybody wants change here or crying about there's no change. Why don't you become the change here? To be the change, you know? And, and, and so I, I think as we, you know, a, as a community, and you'll hear me say also that it takes a village to raise our students here. You know, I, I mean, I, I look at myself here and is doing a, you know, playing a small part. You know, it's, it's like a branch, it's treated, has so many different branches that you branch out here. You know, I feel I'm, I'm, I've got a part of that here that I have responsibility. And so many of us that have a responsibility like yourself and so many others that have come through Amityville here and been blessed to be able to play sports and go on and, and, and celebrate academic scholarships here. We have responsibility to our youth that are here. Now, if you're in Amityville, whether you own a home or you rent a home, you're still going to be taxed here. You know, just in this tax, I mean, every year. So why evolve and have input of what's going on in the district? How we can better the district? How we can educate our students better? How we can have better resources here to ensure that our kids are receiving the same type of education, you know, as some of the other districts here, as Great Neck and, 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 and so many other, other districts out there that, that, you know, are wealthy districts. But if we put our resources together, you know, we can ensure that our students here are, are, are well groomed, well prepared. So when they walk those hallways here and walk on that stage here and, and they're saying goodbye and thank you here, we know that we've done our job, you know, and we've prepared them for society to be successful in society.
Yeah, well said, well said. I think this is very powerful, being that, being that we're both from Amityville, you know, there's an age gap. And then also this you versus me thing is not here. You, you have, you have opened up the door, I think, once this goes out to a lot of people, because you made yourself available. I think sometimes when there's authoritative figures, they don't make themselves available or they seem like they're not available. You know what I mean? So by you being transparent in this, in this, in putting yourself in this light, I think this should make other people start to second guess or even take a look in the mirror and see, how can I play a part? And their part doesn't have to be, you know what I mean? You don't have to be, I don't got to do all the worldly, like, I don't have to be a world changer. I think that's a small part. And whatever that small part is, just do it to the best of my ability. And like you said, some of the other places are wealthy. They're just looking for efficiency.
Yes.
We have enough resources and not all resources has to be money. Sometimes it's time and effort.
That's right.
Time and effort is a great resource that, that can be free, freely given. So if you find the right people that have that frame of mind, which me doing some of these things, we actually have quite a few. Quite a few. So I think this time is, is, is perfect. You know, we got the new gymnasium.
Yes, yes.
We got the new gymnasium. Let's talk a little bit about the alumni event that's coming together. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, it, it's, Tristan, it's funny that you said that because I had, I had a, one of the individuals that are actually one of the staff members here. Maybe about a couple of months ago, reached out to me and wanted to start a, a radio station at, at the school here. And what, but it wanted to specialize in the, if, if I would say, the old school athletes that have come through back in the day and bringing it. So it, it's really kind of ties into what you're doing here. You're doing a combination of the youth, you know, the older guys here, the, you know, somewhere in the middle here. So what you're doing is phenomenal. But when I, you know, when I, when the gentleman reached out to me and said, you know, I was like, wow. You know, that would be exciting to be able to reach back and be able to pull some of those individuals in here and get some of their knowledge and wisdom here, how they were able to succeed when they came up here and what can be applied into today's society. It's awesome.
A hundred percent agree. And, and like you said, because of the limited resources, that usually puts you behind the eight ball when you go out as an adult.
Yes.
Had people that had those limited resources go out as an adult and be able to find their way and excel. So both individuals such as yourself, you need to be highlighted and celebrated. Because far too often we're at each other's neck for one reason or another, trying to go get ahead and everything like that. And I'm just thinking of myself, you know what I mean? Not in a selfish way, but if I had someone like myself and some of the other people that I've talked to.
Yes.
Give me a fraction of the things that they have to offer.
Right.
How, how much better I would have been earlier.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree. And you hit on something, and I'm glad you did a clarification here. When I speak about some of the other districts here, and I think immediately if people were here for the first time, they would think I'm referring to wealthies as far as money is concerned. But when you hit it right on the head when you said resource here, like the first, the school, when I was talking about the other schools here, like Great Neck here, Jericho, Kings Park, all those other districts, they're wealth right there, but not necessarily, you know, I wasn't referring to monetarily here, but being able to have the resources to tap in and to be able to do some other things here that other districts can't do. Yes, that does require some financial breakthroughs, yes, true. But it doesn't always have to tie into just being money itself, you know? I'm the effort, you know, do what you're willing to do.
Communication, communication is the resource. The lack of communication breaks down so many different things on all relationships. So this right here is a resource, right? And if we can offer a communication to one another, then our youth, then we can start to, you know what I mean, plant the seeds of success at an earlier age. And success, success is, you know, self-esteem, you know what I mean? Awareness of what's going on around them, opening up the world. And we live in a world with the technology is a lot more advanced than when we grew up. And things are smaller. So things are smaller, the world is smaller, meaning there's outreach of everything. So how can we bring some of those things in real time to these young individuals to show that they're obtainable? And give them a sense of worth at an earlier age. And it doesn't necessarily have to just be a sport. It doesn't have to be rapping and you don't have to go and do these things where it's a stereotype in some of the urban communities. But there's a lot more. And we have people that walk the halls that you're walking that done it.
Yes.
And so this is where the links are trying to be. So we're trying to pull in, because that's a resource in my opinion. Having somebody that had that experience is a resource. And if we can get some of them to just extend some of their time.
Yes.
That's more rich than some of just the monetary. We can put, we can put the most, the beautiful palace type of situation. If we don't set it man correctly, it's not survive.
That's very true. And so what you're referring to is mentorship. You know, we have to continue with the mentorship, you know, but, but have an earnest mentorship that, you know, that you, when, when you, you're, you're invested into this child, that you're invested into this community here. And every day that you come in here, whether that's your biological son here, daughter here, you're invested into that student here because you want to make sure that they're succeeding. And, and every time you want to get them, they understand that, listen, when we come through the doors here, it's all business here. You know, we can joke and have a good time here, but listen, we coming here for a purpose.
We're trying to improve, we want improvement right here. So, so finding that balance, so everything has a balance. And I think, and it's not that there, there are people out there, there are people, but I don't think there's enough cohesion.
Yes, I agree.
Not enough cohesion, you know, there's not enough cohesion. There are people that are serving their purpose and selfless. There's other people that are serving their purpose and being selfish.
Very true.
And then there's this joint. So, so we, we're all people, there are people that in our community and other communities that are like, yeah, I'm helping, but more for selfish reasons.
Yes, true.
And then you have other people that are selfless, which is disjointed. We ought to find a way to unite.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and, and it, it's, you know, it starts out with being able to have a conversation like me and you are having here.
I agree.
You know, being able to come to the table and you bring ideas, I bring ideas, somebody else brings some ideas. And that's where that resource comes in here, because unlike, you know, wealthy digit, I mean, district here financially, that can just afford to go out and maybe purchase his equipment here or hire somebody else. We have to tap into our resources. So maybe it takes us ten individuals here to be able to do something that only takes one of them to do. But we're not crying about it here. We're simply looking for the resources here to now, as you say, join everybody together here, set the path together that everybody understands what we're trying to do, where we're trying to go here. And have this, once again, I hate to keep being redundant here, but investing your time, investing what you say that you're concerned about, investing about changing your community. Because until we, as individuals that live in our communities here, are willing to put the time in to make change, change never happens. And, you know, it's not, doesn't happen by emotions, it just don't, oh, you wake up in the night, yeah.
No, no. There's a process, there's a process. And you got a lot of people that's not really the, what it ready to put in the work. They're looking for the microwave effect or they're looking to blame. But fortunately, just through this, there are enough passionate people to do their part. So there's links to the chain that we can do. And this, in, in Long Island, there's really not a whole lot of places like Amityville.
And yes.
This is just being real. There's a lot of different successful individuals that have came through there and are across the globe. And there are still some now that came back and they're still rooted and planted. So we need to utilize these resources, this zoom, you know what I mean? To where we can unite with one another. And I think you said, you hit it, you hit it on the head earlier by saying it starts with the conversation. So this is a conversation starter that hopefully can lead to a lot of other conversations. Now we start putting things down on paper.
Yes.
That lead to decision-making, that lead to application. So I can't, I can't thank you enough. I, I thank you enough. I'm thankful that you guys are allowing, as the board, to, to allow us to bring the community together in the springtime for that alumni event.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I think that was very important. So you had a big part in saying, in, in, in saying yes and no. You guys seen the benefit of it. So I want to thank you personally.
I, I appreciate that. And if I could just piggyback on something that you, you mentioned earlier. You, you have the Fred Williams and the Claude Byers dedication coming up in November. And I just want to tell a little story about, you know, how it all ties in about this, it takes a village to, to raise children. And I mean, I mean Fred, you know, Fred Williams, you know, a lot of people wouldn't play for Fred here because Fred was so strict. You know, I think I, your brother that was on, on, on your, one of your shows there, and he was talking about Fred, how strict Fred was, you know? But I mean, and, and Jack was saying way, but from a different style. Fred was the type of guy, he, he walked through the door, he always had a paper in his hand, underneath his arms, you know, he walked through the door and he goes straight into the, the coach's office. And then from the coach's office, immediately he go to the attendance office here to see if he had went to school.
He wants to see if anybody, if you're cutting class, you're tardy, I want to see that.
Yeah, I want to see that. So once he saw that, he, and you, so he wouldn't say any. Yeah, I want to see that. So once he showed that he, and you, so he wouldn't say anything, you come to practice, he said, what, what, what are you here for? He said, didn't I just went to the tennis office here and you weren't in school today or you cut your class right here. Uh, we'll try this again tomorrow, you know? And that's what, that's how Fred was, we'll try it in the mall. But, but Mr. Bias, you know, everybody knows Mr. Bias from, you know, coaching of the girls, but the same mentality here. You know, individuals that were willing to go out and invest in their children, invest in the students here to enhance, you know. Um, um, what we're trying to achieve here in Amityville.
Yeah, a- absolutely, and, and setting up a level of accountability at an early age. And I'm really excited, uh, I'm really excited because like, like, like I said earlier. And, and like you said, not to be redundant, we do have people all across the country. But we have the ability to still communicate with one another a- and, and this day and age. So we need to utilize that and, and we need to utilize each person's gifts. And, and, and you know, pretty much form Voltron for our community, right? And I think if, if we, if we do that, we have an opportunity to be even more special because digging in the crates. I'm like, man, this person did that, this person did this, this person did that. And then when you have them have a conversation, like I, I really had very little resources. And you still found a way to navigate and do these things. So it's like, what if we have some of these individuals right now that are inside of the community? And we can offer. Resources that are just kind of sitting there.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a, that, 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 that's a joyful thing to watch, the maturation of, you know, youth. And then also to give back, you know what I mean? So, so I'm excited to, to play that part. I'm, I've spoken to other people that decided to play that part and this is just the beginning of us building because I know that you're excited.
I'm truly excited here and it's just a matter of us just doing it now, you know, putting our resources together, coming to the table. And see how we want to plan this, see, see how we want to lay it out, you know? You know, it, it's up to us to write our own narrative, you know, nobody has to write our narrative for us here, you know, we're doing it, why not write our own narrative?
Right, so once again, thank you for making yourself available, right? Very, very few, very few people, I, I can't think of any, we gotta go, very few, you know what I mean? Common, uh, you know what I mean, common people are able to have a conversation with the president of the board of education like this. And, and have a candid conversation. That, that, that should make the, the community feel a lot better. And then if we can just, you know, pull the people together that would like to help and then find the right people and put them in the right positions. We could do something special for a town that's already special. We've already been finding a way, we've already been finding a way to win county championships. Go on and earn scholarships, go on and do these types of things and earn, and, and run businesses and all these different types of things. Without much resources, very, very few, very few people knew how to deal with money until they were an adult.
That's right, that's right.
Very few, very few, slim to none, you figured it out, you know what I mean? So if we can give some of those things earlier, imagine what we can do. So, so you know, it's been a really, really tough past two years with the pandemic and everything like that. So the youth are hurting all across the globe, you know, all across, they're, they're hurt, they're hurting because of things have been changed. Altered, you know what I mean? So if we can find a way to be able to be of assistance to the kids. I think it also starts to help the adults. Because there are, there, there, there's adults that are hurting as well. And they can do some of these mentorship type of things, as you said earlier, so we have to start somewhere.
Yeah, I, I agree and, and with the pandemic, the pandemic has showed us that we still can survive. Um, and, 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 and operate and come together and pull our resources together, even though we in different states. Even though we in different parts of the country, you know, you know, that, I think that's something that, um, this Zoom here. Has opened up doors here that we never, if the situation hadn't occurred that way, we, we, we never would have got involved the way. We're involved with Zoom now here, being able to run your meetings here, being able to collaborate with different organizations here. And still have things be successful. Yes, we love that interaction of face to face here. But in the meantime, uh, we can't be face to face because we taking precautionary measures here. We still can do our business here, we still can move forward here and, and get work done, you know, so that's the marvelous thing. And I, I look at it like we here, you know, God always has a way to, 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 to shine here, you know? So, so whatever negativity that may be going in the world, God always has a way to spin it here that he, you know, he'll get the victory. You know, we get the victory, but he's, he's, you know, he's lifted up, you know? Because, you know, I'll tell anybody here, me, 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 he's truly my Lord and Savior, you know, there's no question about it.
Yeah, and he's getting the glory for us and, and, and we're, 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 we're re- reuniting and galvanizing our community. And, and, and it's starting with just simple things. Simple things stacked up make big things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They make big things, it's like dripping water in a bucket, over time it becomes full. So all of these, all of these conversations will not go in vain. So, um, for me, more action than talking. So I'm, 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 I'm serious about playing my part to the best of my ability. And I understand my limitations in certain things, so we're gonna reach out to other help, you know what I mean? That's what, that's what a team does.
Right, absolutely. I tell people all the time, listen, you don't have to be the, the one with have all the answers here. That's why you collaborate and you circle, you surround yourself with talented men and women here. That may not know what you, you know, they may not know what you know, you may not know what they know here. But together you guys come together here and you successful here because guess what? You know, I'm bringing something different to the table, I'm bringing something that you don't understand here, but as a group, we understand it here. So, so, uh, listen, I'm excited, I'm really excited, I'm, I'm just trying to hold all in right now.
I, I agree, I agree, I think this was monumental because like I said, you're in, you're in the administrative role. A lot of times for somebody who's just a guardian or a parent, they feel like there's no connect. So who to sit down with me, you know what I mean, two gentlemen who walk the halls of Amityville. Have a conversation even though we have different titles. But there is a level of respect and then there's also a level of passion to help. Starting with our community, you know what I mean? So I, I, I think that's a beautiful thing and I can't thank you enough. And I think this will be one of many conversations, we'll talk offline and we'll try to start lining some things up. Um, so that will, like, like you said, it's not just talk. We're not doing that, we're gonna try to put some action to this thing.
Tristan, I appreciate you, you inviting me, I appreciate coming on, on, on your podcast here. You know, it's, and once again, it's been an honor and a plever, pledge, pleasure for me to come. You know, I'm not, I'm not one of these guys that big on titles here, I understand, you know, you grab a title here and. You know, cause I'm, I, you know, I, I, I tell the students in a minute here, I mean, I was never in the beginning, I wasn't that studious student, man. At, at, at fifteen and sixteen years old, I was trying to turn pro baseball, man, I was getting trials at that time. So it was, for me, it was all about athletics here, so it wasn't after, after, you know. You know, I understood how education opens up doors for other things, you know? So, so, you know, I look at it, just like I did it, you know, these other kids, you know, uh, uh, can do it also, you know? There's opportunities for them to do, you know, and I'm a firm believer, when somebody tells me I can't do something, I'm even more determined to do it.
And, 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 and your success story, you are, uh, you're a legend inside of our town. By getting all the way through and then also being a huge part of the community, by being the president. Of the Board of Education and your other titles and then to say that these titles are titles. They're attached to me, but they're not defining me to where I can't have a conversation with another person. So thank you for, for, for being again approachable and available. To start moving the needle in this, I think this is very important and I'm honored to be sitting here talking to you. And I look forward to building with you and then building with our neighborhood and hopefully branch it out. Because, you know what I mean, there's a lot of neighborhoods across the country that can utilize improvement.
Yes, yes.
Utilize their resources and things of that nature, so, uh. We're, 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 we're in agreement on so many different things, so it's really exciting because that's not, that doesn't happen all the time.
No, I, I agree, you know, I mean, like, so many times that people get their egos involved here and. And, you know, if you can't be the one that's running the show, you can't be the head honcho here. People don't want to collaborate, they want to get involved, but if they can't have the title or they can't say it was me that did it here. But it's not about that, you know, it's, it, you know, putting the eagles aside, eagle aside here and, and just be able to come for a common cause. What is the common cause? It's the children in the district here, it's the students here. That we're trying to ensure that we're educating here, so they, we must again, without being redundant, when they leave Amityville. And they walk across those wood floors here or depending on if you have anything outside here, you know, staged. You know, you, you, you know, whether it be your, your, you know, your son, your daughter, your nephew, your cousin, whoever it may be. But, you know, for me, I take every child. I look at it as every child that's in Amityville is my child here, that's how I'm invested into them, you know? Yes, I said, I've got a son that's still in, in, in high school, uh, high school now here, but every child, every child, I, I look at it. Doing the best, just like I would for my son, just like I would do for somebody else's son and somebody else's daughter. I'm that invested in, in ensuring that, um, you know, we do the right thing. And like I said, I, I was able to share with you something early, but I'm gonna let you. And do some more research on that here and then, you know, there's some, lots of good news coming around the corner here. Everybody stay tuned, it's gonna, it's gonna hit the newspaper, it's gonna hit the, um, the newsway soon here, so I'm, I'm just excited. About what we're doing right now.
And we're, again, we appreciate it and, and hopefully we can continue to, to build on it, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we can. So less talk and more action, but the communication has to stay at a, at a, at an all-time high. Because, uh, like you said, we would like to have these young individuals utilize some of the resources that we weren't able to. But hopefully, once they graduated, they're more prepared for the world than we were.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, and, and also for them to see of, of an example like, wow. These people, this group of people made it through here. That gives me a sense of, you know, wow, I can definitely do it too. And then if those people turn back to them and say, yeah, absolutely, and here are some of the things that I learned. We know we can't reach all of them, but there's going to be a handful of them and hopefully most of them will say, I received that help.
Right, absolutely, you know, and, 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 and it's so, it's amazing how seeing somebody else do something. Right? And you emilize in them and you say, wow, if he can do that, you know? I, yeah, there's hope, I believe I can do that, you know, or she can do that here, wow, you know what? My mind is telling me that, you know, if I focus, I can do the same thing she's doing here.
Do something like that, I can do. So, so, yeah, I, I, there, there's so many branches off, off the tree. I think we just need to just start with one and then continue to add those branches and those are the conversations that we had on the side. But all in all, this has been beautiful, I think that this gives some of the parents, the guardians and then just the general public. Idea of what you do, your role and what the board's role is. And then also it can also put them in the mirror and what their role can be. As, as, as the general public and then how the collaboration can form to make Amityville at its best.
Right, I, 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 and this, I just had this last piece here for me here.
Okay, let's close it up.
And, and, you know, and you hit on it, you know, a little ways back, you know? It's always been, you know, us against them, authority, you know, against those, uh, the layman person, the parents or the. You know, the guardians or something or, or a family member, you know, it's always been, you know, you can't because. You know, this is the board, um, and they're sitting in authority, then, you know, there's no sense me saying anything, there's no sense me bringing my concerns to the table. Um, because, you know, they're not listening to, but I want to say that's not the case here, you know, I can't, can't say what happened. Years ago and all the things that, that, that happened that wasn't right here, but I can honestly say and honestly say. What we're trying to do, what we're trying to do here is be transparent, we're trying to be sincere. We trying to, you know, open up and embrace ideas that benefit the district, you know? So where we can shine, you know, where we can shine and that's, that's, that's the role and that's my leadership, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I thank you, thank you for putting the bow on that and I, I think we hit a lot of topics, there's still, there's going to be some on the table. We don't have enough time, we're gonna shut it down here and we'll be able to pick up some of those things. And like you said, there's some news that will be, you know, hitting the presses pretty soon, that's going to be very impactful to the community. I'm looking forward to hearing that, I'm looking forward to building with you on a, on, you know what I mean, more on a personal and business relationship. And bringing other like-minded people involved on all fronts to be able to really help the, the community. So once again, thank you for everything that you have done. Thank you for being you, thank you for being transparent and, and giving your time and effort to the community. And I look forward to locking arms and doing the same.
Thank you for the invitation, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, make sure you hit the subscribe button, make sure that you click the notification bell for this beautiful content. We look forward to building with you guys as well. So until next time, Dr. Terry Foltz.